Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every liberty.
Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Avizaneda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Perlatanda.
Yeah.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
And Counselor Ray Cooperow. Nine members present, Madam Chairman, you have a call. To start our business, memoriam's and celebratory resolutions. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown, resolution introduced.
Adopt the resolution, waive the reading.
Unanimity under suspension, see no objections, so move Counselor. Did you want to speak on it or anything, or no?
No.
Okay.
The reason why is because it's a surprise to the individual. I didn't mention the individual. The next resolution introduced by Counselor Vido and all members of the City Council. Whereas the City of Chelsea has officially convened a new Commission on Disability for the purpose of improving accessibility to all people in Chelsea. And whereas through its hard work and diligence, the Commission on Disability has already, in its short time in existence, successfully obtained an FY-20 municipal ADA improvement grant in the amount of $186,698, monies that will be used to complete renovation to public buildings to improve accessibility. Whereas children, parents, community leaders, public officials, and municipal employees will benefit from the accomplishments and improvements that will be completed using this grant funding. Whereas the City of Chelsea joins together to affirm the notion of equality and inclusion for all people with disabilities. Whereas the City of Chelsea is proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our residents with disabilities. Whereas the City of Chelsea is committed to working towards eliminating barriers and discrimination against people with disabilities in order to allow them to achieve greater social, economic, and personal independence. Whereas none of this would be possible without the support and dedication of the newly-formed Commission on Disability. Now therefore be resolved that the City, the Chelsea City Council formally recognizes the efforts of the Commission on Disability for their work toward improving the lives of all people in Chelsea. Counselor Vido.
I would say adopt unanimity under suspension, if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So recently, the City Council has established a disability commission. We are a very diverse city, filled with different people with different needs. As someone that also has their own share of disabilities, I think it's really important for us to really focus on how we can be more inclusive to people of all walks of life. Just recently, we just started this, it's a minor thing of just putting a microphone with the handicap sign there, but the fact is that we weren't even accessible for people in wheelchairs to be able to come up and speak. And so as we continue to grow, and we continue to become more inviting to all the newcomers coming to the city and existing residents, I think it's important that we continue to be mindful of the different needs that we have in this community. So I'm really honored that we're able to have created this commission and that there's monies that are being received on behalf of the ADA improvement grant to continue to push this forward. And so I'm just really grateful for everybody who's honored in the work of our DPW Commissioner, and I just wanted to tip my hat off to you, so thank you for your work. If no one else likes to speak, I'd like to suspend the rules for a couple minutes, so I could present this to some of the members of the commission that are here.
Everybody.
Unless somebody else wanted to speak.
No, we'll suspend a few minutes.
Great, thank you.
There should be a code of conduct, but whatever. All right, where are we? All right. All right. Public hearings, we have a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments regarding the storage of vehicles. Mr. Ambrosino, would you mind actually getting up and speaking about that briefly?
Madam President, if you don't mind, I can speak a minute on all three of these.
That'd be stupendous, Mr. Ambrosino.
So, the first, I support all three of these, and all three were unanimously approved by the planning board, these recommended changes. So, the First Amendment is, has to do with storage of vehicles and really is aimed at our taxi cab industry. So, right now, our taxi cab industry has historically operated in the city for generations and has historically been locating in various parts of the city, including in our industrial districts. However, our current zoning actually doesn't allow this use in the industrial districts, in the very districts where most of these taxi cab entities operate and store their vehicles. This came to light when we sought to get occupancy permits from all of these taxi cab companies. Some actually had old occupancy permits, which meant their use was legal, but others couldn't find them, and our records are not all that great that go back many years. And so they had a predicament, because the current use, even though they were operating in the district for many, many years, isn't technically allowed under our zoning. So this proposal would help to legalize the existing taxi cab business by giving them the opportunity to operate legally where they currently operate. In most, so it basically extends the area where taxi cab companies to operate to the three industrial districts, the general industrial district, the light industrial district, and the light industrial two district, all by special permit. So once this, if this ordinance passes, those companies in those districts will still need to seek a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, but at least they will have a path to legitimacy. The Licensing Commission, which has asked for these occupancy permits as a condition of continuing to grant licenses, has given the companies time to resolve this, is waiting for the zoning to change. Then the cab companies will have to expeditiously move to get a special permit. Once they do, they will have the necessary occupancy permit to secure their license to operate from now until the foreseeable future. So that's what-
And just to clarify, because my understanding was that some of these cab companies had an extension up to December 31st.
They initially did, because the Licensing Commission, for some reason, assumed that the problem would only take one year to resolve, but it turns out it's going to take more than one year, because even if you pass this tonight, the ordinance won't take effect for a few weeks, because we have an advertising requirement. And in addition, they still have to go, some of them still have to go for a special permit. So I'm anticipating that the Licensing Commission is going to continue to extend this deadline a sufficient amount of time to allow companies to pursue the special permit.
So it hasn't been resolved, the deadline. If I'm a cab company, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, if I'm a cab company and I haven't sought, I didn't have the opportunity to seek a special permit up until now, what happens to me on January 1st?
My expectation, if the Licensing Commission hasn't already notified them that their license is going to be extended to give them time to get the special permit, that notice will be given to them in advance of December 31st, but I was under the impression that notice was going out to them this week.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, yeah.
So that's the first zoning amendment.
The second zoning amendment is a technical amendment to the Community Improvement Trust Fund. The Community Improvement Trust Fund was created by this council to require developers who got zoning relief to put some money into a fund to be used for various items that are set out in the ordinance, including traffic signals, infrastructure improvements, affordable housing. It's a small amount of money, it's 3% of construction cost, and it's intended to be three, it's intended to be measured against the construction that you were allowed to do over and above the existing zoning. Unfortunately, somewhere between my submission of this ordinance, when it was first proposed by me, and its codification many months later, the language was adjusted slightly, but in such a way to make it very difficult to enforce. And so I'm proposing a very technical change to the ordinance that will restore the language that I had originally proposed and will make this ordinance easily enforceable and easy to calculate how much a developer is supposed to owe us. The third provision is a change in our wireless overlay district. This is required, because the federal government has made new rules for wireless companies that are rolling out this 5G system, and they are requiring that municipalities accommodate this rollout. So federal regulations and federal law has changed in this area, and that change has rendered our existing wireless overlay district illegal. So we need to make this change to bring our wireless overlay district in compliance with federal law. Basically, the new district does, has two components. First, it extends the overlay district to the entire city, because we have to allow these, this equipment to be installed anywhere in a municipality. And it allows it by right, as long as you are installing it on an existing pole or structure, and as long as you're not extending more than five feet above the height of the existing structure. So if you stay within five feet and you're on an existing structure, you're allowed to install this by right. If you wish to extend higher than five feet, or if you want to put a new pole in the city, that would require a special permit. We've crafted this language so that it's in compliance with federal law. We think this overlay district fully complies with federal law, but, and we're asking you to adopt it, because if you don't adopt it, the only thing we will have on our books is an illegal overlay district, which will be unenforceable for anyone that comes before us. And so anything that we propose would be as a matter of right. And those are the three zoning proposals that are before you.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosino. So we'll do these one at a time, just to stay on the agenda. This is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for the storage of vehicles. Any members of the public that wish to speak on the zoning amendment for the storage of vehicles, please come up to the podium. Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Second is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for the Community Improvement Trust Fund. Any members of the public that wish to speak, please come to the podium. Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Lastly, the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for the wireless communications overlay district. Any members of the public that wish to speak? Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. And finally, we are having a public hearing, or should we just continue? We should probably just continue, right? A public hearing, do we do?
For this one?
Yeah. A public hearing on the proposed urban center housing tax increment financing zone, urban center housing tax increment financing plan, and urban center housing tax increment financing agreement for Central Avenue Commerce District in support of the Innis Apartments development project. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public that wish to speak, please come up to the podium regarding the TIF agreement for Innis Development. Please state your name and address for the record or affiliation. You have four minutes.
Okay. Good evening. Sean McReynolds, Director of Development with Joseph J. Corcoran Company, Eight-Lot Phillips Lane, Norwell, Mass. Thank you, President Vido and the City Councilors. Your thoughtful deliberations and guidance throughout this process has led to an improved project, timeline, and partnership for the residents of Chelsea. We are very proud to be working with you guys and to accomplish in collaboration with the Chelsea Housing Authority, the Innis Residents Association, and all of our neighbors in the Chelsea area. Today represents one of the final hurdles of realizing new homes for families at Innis Apartments, and creates opportunities for more to be able to live, work, and grow in your wonderful community. This public-private partnership housing model will not only return much-needed homes for residents of Innis Apartments, but will also redevelop the underutilized transit-oriented parcel of land, unlocking millions more in revenues for the City of Chelsea and encouraging more people to leave their vehicles at home. This project will increase tax revenues to the City of Chelsea by over $4 million over the next 15 years. Under the current use, the city would realize only about $50,000 in revenue over that same time period. So this is a net benefit to the city. The redevelopment will also unlock state funds that will be tied to any new enrolled school-aged child that resides at the new housing. The City of Chelsea would also be very proud to have led the way for other municipalities currently towns across the Commonwealth are seeking our input on how we did it here. And so I really want to thank you for your leadership and continued hard work on behalf of your community, and we look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for the public hearing regarding Innis Development? Going once.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I'm here as a member of the Chelsea Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, and just want to echo the sentiments that have already been put forth, also to thank you for your efforts, having taken these issues up, bringing them to subcommittee, having consideration for what is, what we're all trying to accomplish here. And so I just want to thank you for, this has been a very long process, and we appreciate very much your diligence in ensuring that we're able to carry this out for the residents on Central Ave. It's amazing to think about how long this process has gone and how we are ever inching ever closer to, you can sense on the families' parts that there's going to be a lot of movement down there come next spring, and people, you know, and there's a lot of preparatory work, there's a lot of preparation has happened for families, everything from, you know, the moving of the families, considerations for bus routes for schools, giving priority for families with children in schools to be relocated in the city versus outside the city, all kinds of things have been contemplated. And I also commend the administration of the Housing Authority for their efforts to ensure that the transition is as, has the least negative impact on these families in the interim while they transition out to be ready to have the site redeveloped and they are able to move into these new apartments. My address, by the way, is 85 Blossom Street, I forgot to mention at the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say briefly, the city has worked very hard to try to help make this project a reality. We fully support this TIF, which is really the last milestone necessary to bring this project to fruition. So I urge the council to approve the TIF and the plan and the agreement. Thank you.
Anybody else for the public hearing on the TIF agreement for Innis Development? Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. And lastly, for public hearings, we have a public hearing on the proposed homo petition on additional alcohol licenses. We had a subcommittee conference on this last week, and I'm assuming we'll be continuing it to continue conversations, but we did advertise we're having a public hearing on it, so for the sake of transparency, if there's anybody that wants to speak on it, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. Going once, going twice. As I said, we will re-advertise it and set it up for another date.
Public speaking?
Public speaking, regular public speaking. Any members of the public that wish to speak? We have a quiet bunch tonight. You're more than welcome, Alex.
Good evening. Thank you all very much. Thank you, council. Thank you, executives and other officers and commissioners and other members of the public for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to speak very briefly. I'm glad of coming to these meetings, I'm glad to see that everybody's here to help, and I do appreciate that as well. I wanted to say that, and hopefully I'm dressed and talking appropriately. So hopefully, it's the end of the year, so I wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, whatever you wanted to celebrate. And then I wanted to say one more thought, and then, put the microphone back, I guess. So, I saw this on a TV show, but I really liked it. I'm sorry I couldn't memorize it, but I always get choked up when I hear it. It begins, "Every life is a pile of good things and bad things. The good things don't always soften the bad things, but vice versa, the bad things don't always..." "The bad things don't necessarily spoil the good things or make them unimportant." And we definitely add it to his pile of good things. And that's, that's the quote, and I thought it was, I thought it would be appropriate. Hopefully, hopefully you liked it. And happy holidays.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Public speaking? This is your last opportunity to speak before in 2019. Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed.
We have approval of the minutes for the December 9, 2019.
Counselor Garcia. File under suspension, if there are no objections. See no so moved. Communications from the city manager.
First communication from the city manager, soundproofing funding. Dear councilors, I am writing a response to the recent council order seeking clarification on the request to set aside $300,000 for our soundproofing from funds provided to the city by Massport. As I explained in my May 30, 2019 letter, a copy of which is attached, the annual $600,000 payment from the Massport cannot be directly utilized for soundproofing. The Massport payment is a pilot payment that is considered a general fund revenue by the Department of Revenue. It cannot be directly spent by the city. Instead, if the council wishes to set aside funding for soundproofing, it must make a specific appropriation of funds. As previously promised, I will submit to the City Council an appropriation request for this soundproofing purpose in the amount of $300,000 from missionally certified free cash. That appropriation request will be submitted to the City Council in January as part of the broader financial package for our free cash expenditures. If the council approves the appropriation, we will need to confer together on how to operate a soundproofing program. We will need to establish jointly some guidelines in order to ensure that the funds are equitable, equitably distributed. Sincerely, Tom Ambrosino.
Can I have a motion? Anybody? Did you want to speak or anything?
The next communication from the city manager, notice of waiver intent. Pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I invite you to notify you of my intention to hire Mr. Fernando Marzoni, Edith Everett, number 2 Everett in Massachusetts. As a temporary employee, to work on a MassSave Municipal partnership grant awarded to the Department of Public Works and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirements set forth in the Administrative Code, Part 4, Section 112.01. A copy of Mr. Marzoni's resume is attached. The MassSave grant will cover the salary of Mr. Marzoni for one year. Mr. Marzoni will earn 13, 20 per hour for a maximum of 19 hours per week. The MassSave grant is funded by EverSource and is designed to improve outreach to residents and businesses in Chelsea and increase participation in EverSource's different energy reduction and incentive programs. Mr. Marzoni will engage in door knocking campaigns, social media mailings, and ask, and other tasks to encourage residents and businesses to sign up to these free energy reduction programs. Mr. Marzoni has previously worked as an interim and the DPW knows the city well. Mr. Marzoni grew up in Chelsea and graduated from Chelsea High School. His family only recently moved to Everett. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Can I have a motion? There's suspension, if there are no objections. See no so moved. Do you want me to be the next one?
Sure.
Next communication received from the city manager. Dear councilors, in response to the recent City Council orders regarding the Chelsea Collaborative, I have attached a letter from the collaborative dated December 10, 2019. In the letter, the collaborative confirms that it has not expended and will not expend in the future any funds from the City of Chelsea for voter registration activities. Further, as requested by the council, the letter identifies the number of individuals the collaborative registered to vote in the most recent municipal election. Communication under suspension. See no objections, so moved. Did you have something? Take the zoning amendments out of order. Can we just? Which ones?
Well, if we can take the-
So we would have to pull it, pull out the, wait a minute.
Second reading?
Are you talking about all the public hearings? Okay. So we'll do it in order.
Want to work on second reading now?
He wants to take all the public hearings out of order to vote on it now.
Which one do you want first?
What would you like first? He said he wants to go in order the way we held the public hearings.
Yeah, it can go, you can go in order, and if not, we can take the Housing Authority one first.
What is your, what would you like to do, Counselor?
I'll take the Housing Authority one first.
Okay, so we'll take out the housing, which is... Yep, but there's three different ones. So it's D, E, and F, right?
Okay, we're on items 11, D, E, and F on the agenda. The first TIF is, let me see. Order that in accordance with Chapter 47, Section 60 of the General Laws pursuant to 760 CMR 58, the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Financing Zone entitled the Central Ave Commerce District and roughly bounded by Marginal Street from Willow Street to Parcel 1421 to the east, Watch Street from Parcel 1421 to Parcel 2217 to the north, the boundaries of Parcel 2217 from Watch Street to Central Ave to the west, the center line of Central Ave from Parcel 2717 to Willow Street to the south, and Willow Street between Central Ave and Marginal Street to the south, as depicted in Central Avenue Commerce District UCH TIF zone map attached here too is hereby adopted.
What do you wish to do with this Council?
I'd ask for a roll call on the adoption, if there are no objections.
And none, did you want to speak?
A yes vote would be to approve the TIF, this particular section. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido? Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero absent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. That particular section has been approved. The next TIF section ordered that in accordance with Chapter 47, Section 60 of the General Laws and 760 CMR 58, the UCH TIF plan for the Central Ave Commerce District prepared by the Department of Planning and Development and attached here too is hereby adopted.
Counselor Robinson.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. That particular portion has been approved. Go ahead.
An order approving the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Financing Agreement, UCH TIF Agreement by, by in between the City of Chelsea and Joseph J. Corcoran Company, LLC, pursuant to Chapter 23B, Chapter 40, Section 59, Chapter 40, Section 60 as amended, and 760 CMR 58 for the redevelopment of real property situated at 170 Central Avenue cataloged in the assessors' maps under map 22 lot 17, map 22 lot 106, and map 22 lot 107, and owned in fee by the Chelsea Housing Authority who have entered into a 99-year lease agreement with the Joseph J. Corcoran Company, LLC, for the redevelopment of the property. B, authorizing the city manager to submit a certified project application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for approval, and C, authorizing the city manager to execute the UCH TIF agreement and any other related documents and take such other and further actions as may be necessary or appropriate to implement the UCH TIF agreements, and take such other and further action as may be necessary or appropriate to obtain approval of the certified project applications, or to carry out the purposes of this order, and to take any other action relative thereto ordered. The Chelsea City Council, A, hereby approves in accordance with Chapter 23B, Chapter 40, Section 59, Chapter 40, Section 60 as amended, and 760 CMR 58, the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Financing Agreement between the City of Chelsea and Joseph J. Corcoran Company, LLC, for the redevelopment of real property situated at 170 Central Ave, assessors map 22 lot 17, map 22 lot 106, and map 22 lot 107. Attached hereto, hereby authorizes the city manager to submit a certified project application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for approval, and hereby authorizes the city manager to execute the UCH TIF agreement on behalf of the city, and take such other and further action as may be necessary or appropriate to obtain approval of the certified project application to carry out the purpose of this order, and take any other action to carry out the purpose of this vote. Counselor Robinson.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Roll call. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted.
Congratulations.
To communications and petitions. We'll come back to these communications and petitions to the council.
Yep.
Okay, we have a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed zoning amendment for storage of vehicles for hire and return from hire. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion is adopted. We have the next communication, a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed zoning amendment for Community Improvement Trust Funds.
Yeah, these are communications. Is that, okay, I thought so. Okay, yeah, so these are just communications. There's something coming up under, yeah.
The next communication, a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed zoning amendments for Wireless Communications Overlay District.
Can I have a motion?
Accept and file. Copy of a communication received from the President of Chelsea Chamber of Commerce, Joseph W. Mahoney regarding the home move petition for additional alcohol licenses. Last communication, copy of a communication received from the President of Chelsea Chamber Foundation, charitable foundation, Sergio Harameo regarding the home move petition for additional alcohol.
There are no objections. Seeing none, so moved.
Okay, unfinished business. We have under unfinished business.
The public hearings.
The storage of vehicles. The first public hearing was for the storage of vehicles. It's a pleasure to be aboard.
Want to vote on it now?
Roll call.
Counselor Garcia.
Roll call requested by Counselor Garcia.
Can we just, just for the record, I just wanted to mention the names out loud for people watching. For reappointment to the Board of Registitors of Voters, Mr. Jacob Resnick. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong, wrong communication. It's the end of the year.
This is on the public hearing.
The public hearing, that's right.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted. On the Community Improvement Trust Fund. Okay, counsel Brown. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted. And we have the Wireless Communications Overlay District.
Make motion also, leave the reading, roll call vote. We heard about it earlier.
That was the public hearing, right. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion is adopted. Was there public hearings under zoning changes?
Back to the agenda. Second readings.
Second readings, we have the second reading on the appointments. Do you want to read the appointments?
Yep. Just appointments to boards and commissions. We have for reappointment to the Board of Registitors of Voters, Mr. Jacob Resnick of 68 Captain's Row. For appointment to the Licensing Commission, Ms. Emily Sherniak of 183 Congress Ave in Chelsea. And for reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Mr. Mohammed Quazim from 3 Clayton Court in Chelsea. Can I have a motion?
To affirm the appointments?
Yeah, confirm appointments through a roll call.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. That motion is adopted. We have here for the second reading, order introduced by Counselor Brown, ordered that in order to reduce interest costs to treasurer with the approval of the city manager's authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or any portion of the city's general obligation bonds outstanding as of the date of adoption of the order, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the bonds of the city to be refunded and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that the treasurer is authorized to execute such documents as may be necessary or desirable to carry out this transaction, including one or more refunding trust agreements with a bank or trust company.
Counselor Brown.
That's the order acted on, to be adopted on a roll call vote.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero absent. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion is adopted. The last order under second readings?
No, it's still mine.
No, we have. Order that Counselor Brown ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws, any and all bonds of the city to be issued pursuant to this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require.
Counselor Brown? Oh, Counselor Bishop moves roll call.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Brown?
Present.
Counselor Perlatonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero absent. Here in favor and none opposed, two absent, one present. Motion adopted.
Final order on the new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson, order that the city manager provide an update on the Forbes Properties. Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, I'd like to amend that to also include Midas Muffler.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'd like to amend that to include Midas Muffler, 6th Street and the Everett Avenue properties.
You'd like to amend it to include Midas Mufflers?
6th Street and Everett Avenue.
6th Street Everett Ave property.
Adopted and suspended.
Adopted and suspended. If there are no objections.
Seeing none. That concludes our agenda. So now it's public announcements, and I just have a few things to say. First and foremost, I just want to thank everyone for an amazing year. I'm so excited that we finally got to an agreement on the Innis Development, and that we're going to be providing new homes and preserving those 96 units and creating more homes for other people. There was a lot of back and forth. I'm proud of this council for standing up, and for, and for Corcoran and the Housing Authority, listening to our needs and our concerns and addressing it. And it just goes to show the values or what can be done when we have healthy dialogue and trying to really connect on our shared values. When I first came into council a few years ago, I came in as an activist, and I didn't trust government, nonprofits, community leaders. I didn't trust anyone. And since I've been here, it is amazing the work that we've been able to do with many of us. The year that I came in, we came in with a bunch of new councilors that had, were running for the first time, and it was really exciting, just some of the things that we've been able to do. When we first got elected, the city manager had only been here a couple of years. And slowly but surely, I started to see his leadership was a little different than the person that held his office before. And so you started to see different changes in the city, in the departments. UCDPW has expanded significantly. The streets are cleaner. The city clerk's office, for what it's worth, it gets busy, but it just runs a much, it's much smoother. We have a recreational department. There are so many things that we have been able to do because we were able to work with one another. And I'm so grateful to have been awarded or afforded this opportunity to lead my city council for the past two years. It is the first time a woman has held this position in the history of Chelsea. So I'm honored to be able to serve in the capacity of leading this council. I want to thank everybody for supporting me. And also, I'm just grateful, oh, no, I'm sorry, you were good. And so I'm just really grateful to continue to work in this community. As we have, we have a new council coming in, and I'm excited to work with everyone. I really just want to express the importance of us building on where we intersect in terms of our values, and I hope that we could figure out how to continue to work cohesively so that we are making sure that the people of Chelsea are being represented always. There are a couple of colleagues here that won't be with us next year, but I will start with my friend, Counselor Louis Dejada. I just, when I was first elected, you came in at the same time, and we haven't always agreed politically. But it didn't matter, because I always knew that your heart was in the right place. The way that you communicate with your constituents constantly to let them know and keep them informed of things that are happening in the city, the way that you have shown up and advocated for your district, showing up to meetings, and, and the way that you wore your heart and your sleeve for me is commendable. Some things are bigger than politics, and regardless of where we align politically, I just am really proud to have been able to serve with you the next four years. I hope you stay close, and I hope that you continue, hopefully you can, there can be a bridge between you and the incoming city councilor, so that there could be support, then we can continue to build together. So I want to present you with this plaque for your, for years of service here on the city council. Counselor Brown, did you?
All three of the existing city council members, they've all have been here and done a great job, effort, dedication that you showed every time that you've come to this hall. As Counselor said earlier, we've always may have had some difference, but the reality and at the end is what we got tonight when we voted on this huge project that will be taking place in our city. It shows that we all had the right intentions, the right frame of mind, although we had the arguments, the reasons that we had to approach it differently. So I want to thank my counselor, Joe, my counselor, as Recupero would say, Louis. Want to thank Louis. And I also, special thank you to, personal thanks to my good friend, Bob Bishop, who I have the honor tonight to present this award for your dedication and your service to the city of Chelsea. But not only that, Bob, I want to just thank you personally for your leadership, that you took me under your wing when you came in two years ago as the chairman of the Finance Committee. You gave me some spunk to ask those questions, and look at the answers, and try to figure out what better way that we can spend our money and save our money, but also do the right thing. So I want to thank you for your awareness to just bring that to my attention. And as I took on the role a second year after you no longer was the chairman, I used that, and that, that insight, that dedication, and those questions that you had everyone looking at you about have now been a part of me when I have those meetings. So thank you. Not only that, but I want to thank you and your family for not only I've had the opportunity to serve with you, but I had the opportunity to serve with your daughter. And please tell her that she, you felt her shoes, you know. You know, she came up here, she was really excited, and she was new to politics. She came in, she gave it her all and all. She did a very good job. Her dad came in. I know you're a former alderman. You did a great job, and I just want to thank you for not only your dedication, your friendship to the city of Chelsea, but your fight... but your fight for the right to ask those right questions, but our finance and also give us that understanding that we have the right to really know how the money's being used and why the money's being used. But thank you for all you've done. And it's my honor to present you with this award.
Oh, go ahead, yes, sir.
I just want to say that it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with all of you. And I wish you all the very best in the coming years. And I hope you'll save some money. As you all know, I have been, I've served as city clerk in the past. And many years ago, I got a call from a gentleman who was the director of the Hall of Flags over at the State House. And he informed me that the City of Chelsea did not have a flag flying in the Hall of Flags over at the State House. And was there anything I, as city clerk, could do to try to remedy the situation? So I told him I'd work on it, and I did. And I wound up getting up on a ladder and taking a picture of this flag up close so that they could make a flag from them. And it took a lot more than I thought it would. It, it took well over a year for them to make the flag. So I had two, two of them made. One of them was sent off to the Hall of Flags a few years ago and is now flying in the Hall of Flags over at the State House. The second one, I don't know how, but it got stuck in a box. And my wife is very thankful that I'm cleaning out those boxes and throwing everything away. And all of the paper that I pick up here every week, I know you all know how much that adds up. So I'm getting rid of all that, and at the bottom of the box, I found this bag. And I said, what the hell is that? Oh, it's the second flag. Since my last night, I said, that could be a good time to bring it up here tonight. So I brought it and I want to present it to the chairman. And I'm sure you can find a place on this wall to hang it.
That's awesome.
It's a beautiful flag, really. As I said, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with all of you. And I wish you all the very best in the coming year.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you. Just to follow up, Counsel Bishop, honestly, I, I gauge, I gauge my work as a human being and as a city councilor by the way that not I get along with my peers, but by people that I really like, have opposing views with. And you and I don't agree on almost anything. But I really do appreciate the way that you have shown up for me and that there was always mutual respect. And even when others tried to display disrespect towards me, you always had my back. And who would have thought that a little old reform rat from Chelsea Bellingham Square and an older white guy from Prattville would become such good friends? But I am incredibly grateful, and that just speaks volumes about the diversity of Chelsea and how, how, what's possible when you build from a place of good intentions. Counsel Robinson.
To Louis, good luck, gonna be missed. To Bobby Bishop, who goes back to me back in the day when we were aldermen. Bob was a very good leader, very knowledgeable. I used to rely on Bob for a lot of good things. So I want to congratulate, and actually had the opportunity to coach Bob's daughter at Pope John when I was a coach there. To my friend, Joe Pelatundo, who is real and is not afraid to speak his mind. And sometime him and I, we're not always on the same page, but after it was over, we'd walk away and still be good friends. So it would be my honor to present this to Joe Pelatundo. And we did get the spelling right this time.
Counsel Tejada, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so you know what, I'd be remiss to leave and not say, ah, thank you to my colleagues, all of you. I mean, you know, I learned a lot. We had some good times, some bad times. But overall, we're a family, you know? We resolve things and we move on, and it's great. You know, it's funny, I'm out here and I'm always like, trying to be gregarious and whatever, but the reality is that we all have our own demons that we fight. Mine is low self-esteem and, and I have this social anxiety. So it's really tough to go out and do what I do. And so for that reason, every vote means so much to me. It really does. And you don't know what you did to me by voting for me when you did. And even in this election, where I didn't go forward, I, I appreciate it. And I want to thank everybody who did vote for me. And just wish you all the best. To my opponent, you know, it was a hard fought battle. She did great, congratulations. I've spoken to her and, and I told her, whatever she needs, I'm here. It's all about improving the area.
That's right.
So, you know, we're all family.
That's right.
And in the end, we all come together and build a better Chelsea.
That's right.
And, you know, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Should we sing Kumbaya? No. Any other announcements besides the obvious Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa? Anybody? Moment of silence? Two moments of silence, yeah.
Richard Goreska, who was a past granddad of Chelsea Council number eighty-three Knights of Columbus and a Chelsea resident all of his life, lived up on Library Street, right next to the Box Works thing that's there now. And Thomas Bocchi, I mean Stephen Bocchi, son of Bob and Ruth Bocchi, who was a Chelsea resident all of his life, also cast away this week.
Tommy Phillips, yeah.
Okay, I also want to, Joe Smith, who I didn't know, but I read the remarkable story on his life. He was a Chelsea kid, he graduated from Chelsea in nineteen forty-five. He went on and became the president of Warner Production. And the whole story was so amazing. And it wasn't just he moved into Chelsea, but it was remarkable to read the story and find out that he was actually from Chelsea and he was the man in the music business. So I want to wish his family well wishes and words of condolence.
Mrs. Eileen Mulaney of the Mulaney family, a long time Chelsea family, lived on Cary Ave, had four children, one of which was Joe Mulaney, who was the Chelsea High Principal here. My thoughts go to them too.
See, no further business before us, we're adjourned.